All right, well, it still says 5:59 by my watch, but... We'll wait for one more minute. We will go ahead and call the regular meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Counselor Eber?
Here.
Counselor Holland?
Here.
Counselor Will?
Happy to be here.
Counselor Sheldon?
Here.
Counselor Blum?
Here.
Counselor McGuire is absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Protem, is there a motion?
Yes. I move to go into executive session pursuant to CRS Sections 24-6-402 for B and 24-6-402 for E for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions and determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators regarding communications with Colorado Open Lands regarding the conservation easement on the property known as Quincy Farm. I further move to return to the City Council meeting at the conclusion of the executive session. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please take the vote?
Counselor Eber?
Aye.
Counselor Holland?
Aye.
Counselor Will?
Aye.
Counselor Sheldon?
Aye.
Counselor Blum?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We will go into executive session and return.
I... no, I don't... we don't need our agendas or anything. There's... no.
Now reconvening the city council meeting at 6:32 PM. Audience participation period. We don't have anyone in the audience. There are also no members of city boards and commissions present. There's been a request to remove item 7C. Is that the right one, Rob?
Correct.
From the consent agenda. So do I have a motion for items 7A, B, and D?
Move to approve the consent agenda items A, B, which one is removed?
And D.
And D, okay.
Motion? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Going back to item 7C, Councilor Eber.
My question, it's a quick question about the inclusion in the contract for the concrete barriers that are over the High Line Canal on Colorado Boulevard. I made a quick phone call to City Manager Thorson and asked him kind of what that was about and what the purpose was. My comment is that those barriers seem to protect pedestrians that are on that part of the High Line Canal, or on that part of the trail, right where it crosses the canal. And if we remove them and something happens, they have no alternative but to jump into the canal as a way to get out of the way. Whereas on the other parts of the trail, they can just kind of run further into the bushes and get out of the way. I think, and I don't want to talk for you, Jim, but the idea was is that we get a grade from the state authorities, is that correct, about that, the way that barrier is designed, that it can be a launchpad for vehicles? And so I guess what I'm trying to raise is for our consideration is, I don't have a problem taking out the barriers if they are dangerous, but maybe we as councils should think about what we might want to replace them with that fits the bill of providing a degree of safety to any pedestrian right as they cross the canal there.
So bi-yearly, CDOT does a bi-yearly inspection of our bridges for us. Each year it comes up that our guardrails do not meet the standard based on safety of the ash-toe specs, which are what all of the states use for their safety specs on any roads, including bridges. We are on a three-year plan. We've had this one on the books for about three years. We replaced the guardrails going across Quincy Avenue at Little Dry Creek. Lot different there. That's a lot narrower trail on the outside of that. On this one, the bridge is not a narrow bridge. It's wider than the actual roadway and bridge and trail when you're not on the bridge. And to meet the standard without removing that barrier, we would have to extend the rail through the High Line Canal Trail. Because we would have to extend about 10 to 12 feet on the end of the concrete barrier. If we take out the concrete barrier, we don't have to extend that. We can put something back, whether it's an actual shorter guardrail, or some floppy post-type things on the bridge. But it doesn't make sense for the cost to replace that barrier because there is no narrowing of the road and the bridge there, that pedestrians will still be safe. The cars are not pinched in as they are at the Quincy Bridge. So we met out there with the city engineer, talked about all of our options, and the best option was to remove the barrier and redo some painting on the asphalt there with the green paint and go from there. Because right now the barrier is more of a safety hazard than it is a safety improvement.
Councilor Sheldon was just trying to bring up on a map, a photo of the concrete barriers. I know with our technology solution, that might be a lot to ask on the fly, but is that possible? I see, and I know I see it here, but it's really hard to see.
I'm running in Colorado.
Yeah, so it's there, yeah. We got it here, never mind. So now we all know what we're talking about. Is there other, other thought? Thank you for bringing that point up, Councilor Eber. Are there other comments?
Well, I guess I have, yeah, because I wondered about that too, to be honest with you. On one hand, glad you brought it up, but as I was thinking through it, I thought, okay, those barriers, for instance, the same kind of barriers are not there at Quincy and the High Line, are they? I mean, it's just, it's just-
It's just a handrail.
Just a handrail, which exists there too.
And the metal, there's metal-
Just like that, just like Colorado and Quincy.
No, there's a metal, like, what are those called, Jay? The metal-
It's just a, it's a guardrail.
For the cars?
Yeah.
It's not a handrail, it's a-
There's a handrail behind the guardrail.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody else said that, but it's like that. It's, it's-
No.
It doesn't look like that. It looks like that low-
Jim's working on it right now.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not-
No, it's the low metal things that go along-
Well, it's a normal guardrail.
And let me mention that I'm not looking to stop the approval of this contract because it does sound like we need to remove the barrier that is there. All I'm asking for us to consider is, at a point in the future, do we want to put something else in to act as a protectant to somebody who is on that portion of the trail, literally as it crosses the canal? So for purposes of 7C approval, I'm okay with approving the contract. I just want to figure out whether or not we do need to do something else later.
Can you bring up the picture, a picture of Colora-, sorry, Quincy, where the High Line Canal crosses Quincy?
For reference on your screens, you should be able to see the barriers as they are today, and the thought is to remove those. If council so directs, we could look at an alternative barrier that would meet ash-toe and the MUT.
So for purposes of 7C approval, I'm okay with approving the contract. I just want to figure out whether or not we do need to do something else later.
Can you bring up the picture, a picture of Colora, sorry, Quincy, where the High Line Canal crosses Quincy?
For reference on your screens, you should be able to see the barriers as they are today. And the thought is to remove those. If council so directs, we could look at an alternative barrier that would meet ASHTO and the MUTCD guidelines in that location if, if the desire is to continue that safety barrier between the pedestrians and the fence there.
Because we do have that at Colora, or I'm sorry, at the High Line in Quincy. There are those just metal.
Yes.
Barriers. And there might be something more attractive to your, you know, that meets the requirements.
We will be replacing those in the future also. Those don't meet any safety standards also.
Okay. So replacing that, do you?
Those would be replaced.
Do you have any thoughts of what to replace them with yet?
It's gonna, it would be like the guardrail that we did on Quincy and Little Dry Creek.
Okay.
Because the big difference is how the ends are treated for vehicular traffic.
Okay. Well, I think I, I would be interested in, I agree with Councilor Eber that obviously these need to be removed for safety reasons, but I would be interested in seeing some proposals for alternatives that would meet the safety guidelines to have some separation of pedestrians along Colorado Boulevard. And maybe it can be similar to whatever we end up deciding to do here on Quincy as well.
So, so the issue is safety for pedestrians? And is there a view then that pedestrians are more at risk of cars when they go across that bridge than they are when they continue walking right on down on the path? I don't.
No, the, the safety issue right now is that those concrete barriers can act like a ramp if a car hits it, right? So it's an auto safety issue.
Right. We, okay, I'm sorry.
But once they're taken out.
Right.
Then there's a concern, I have a concern, it sounds like Rob does, yes, about pedestrian safety.
What, what is the, when they're out? So you're basically walking along there.
Yeah.
There's more of a concern for pedestrians in that 50, 100 feet than there is 100 feet further down the road.
The pedestrian can.
Because you can move off to the side into.
Can jump into the bushes.
You can jump into a bush or something. You can, when a distracted driver starts to swerve.
I get you.
Off this way, there's nowhere, there's a huge guardrail right there. There's nowhere to go.
So what I would suggest is that you let staff determine what kind of other safety barrier we could put there. I don't know at this time what we'd be looking at. Obviously, you could approve the contract as is tonight, and then what we can do is just inform you over the, informally over time as to what we believe the proper option is over there.
And for some clarity, we would not replace the barrier on the right side of the screen because that is not a trail. The trail is only on the west side. That, that is just a widened bridge right there that dead-ends into the bushes. So I just want to be clear that we're only looking at the trail side to replace once we remove those concrete barriers.
I see. Yep, okay. So people walk, it looks like people walk there anyway? That's odd, but yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's, it doesn't make much sense.
So the gravel side, gravel side stays, the asphalt side is proposed to go out?
No, but they're all removed, but if we put anything back in, it would only be on the trail side, not the asphalt side, not on this gravel side.
I think I'd add, you know, Jay, you, you mentioned that there are other similar kinds of construction that you're contemplating, changing, installing. To the extent we can, I guess I'd like to add on to Katie's thought, that, add on to that, that we look for some consistency in style and.
Agreed.
And aesthetic.
That makes sense.
Okay. So given that discussion, it sounds like we are in agreement to move forward with this contract. Is there a motion?
Sure. I move to approve change order number 002 to the 2022 construction contract with essential contractors in the amount of $79,545. I further move to authorize the city attorney to make such changes as may be needed to correct any non-material errors or language or to negotiate such changes to change order 002 as may be appropriate and do not substantially increase the obligations of the city and to authorize the mayor to sign such change order when a final, when in final form.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Moving on to new business, resolution three, series 2024, in opposition to Colorado House Bill 24-1152 concerning increasing the number of accessory dwelling units. Director Workman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. What brings us here this evening is a united cause to oppose a House bill that's been introduced, known as House Bill 24-1152. CML has requested that local governments pass resolutions in opposition to this, this bill. I know that the mayor specifically was interested in, in having a resolution in opposition to this bill, and so that's what we're here this evening. I know that council is generally aware of this, but for the public that may be watching at home or watching later, I wanted to just hit some highlights related to the bill. It was introduced last week. The timing for reading and for public testimony has not been set yet. It's hard to summarize the, I'll just say the bill in one slide, but this is, this is an attempt to do that. Essentially, we as the city and HOAs would have to allow at least one accessory dwelling unit to be built on every part of the city or HOA that allows for a single-family detached residence. Not only does it say we have to allow it, it says that we, the city, nor an HOA can require common sense things like parking standards, owner occupancy requirements, and design standards. Nor can we get public input, such as public hearings for accessory dwelling units, nor we allowed to have approval standards to ensure consistency with things like our master plan or other guiding documents. The city would not be able to ensure compatibility with surrounding areas or evaluate and require mitigation of any potential impacts of an accessory dwelling unit. This bill violates over 100 years' worth of home rule authority granted by the Colorado Constitution for the most basic of community rights, which is to determine what land uses are appropriate and where those land uses are appropriate. Home rule authority allows communities to have a unique vision and a, and avoid a top-down, one-size-fits-all mandate from state legislators who are removed from the local process. The bill alleges that ADUs increase housing supply, contribute to affordable and equitable homeownership, and adequately meet the housing needs of a growing Colorado population, but the bill only applies to municipalities in metropolitan planning organizations. Essentially, that equates to the Front Range and Grand Junction. The bill omits the obligation for mountain towns, communities on the eastern plains, and most of the western slope communities. The state requires that we as a local jurisdiction have a master plan so that we may manage a variety of issues, including land use and growth, in a way that fits their community identity. This bill would prohibit communities from being able to use their state-mandated master plan to evaluate if ADUs are appropriate everywhere any single-family home is allowed. This bill will neuter our 2022 master plan's vision statement to ensure that Cherry Hills Village remains a safe, serene, low-density residential community. Certainly, the city currently allows ADUs in our R1 and R2 zone districts with some limitations. The city's master plan does not support the addition of more zone districts that allow ADUs or removing the requirement for owner occupancy. Because of this, staff is recommending that the council vote to approve Resolution Three, Series 2024, in opposition to Colorado House Bill 241152. That would conclude my presentation, but staff's available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Two other just kind of small things that I would add is that there's also a municipal size limitation that, in my opinion, is arbitrary. It's, only applies to communities with a population of 1,000 or more. And I'm not sure where that number comes from and why ADUs are appropriate for communities with 1,000 or more people, but not for anybody else. And then, and another interesting observation is that, and this is a recurring theme in several bills that we'll be seeing this year, the legislature doesn't understand the concept of a metropolitan planning organization, and I think they might be very surprised to learn that the communities of Idaho Springs, Georgetown, Empire, Silver Plume, Lock Buoy are all members of Dr. Cog. And so this would apply to Idaho Springs and Georgetown. Several of those communities are too small to meet the 1,000-person threshold, but it would actually apply to Idaho Springs and Georgetown. And Lock Buoy, yeah, which is more on the, you know, kind of the eastern plains side as opposed to the mountain towns side, but.
Which if it passes, you might tell the guys they're probably going to lose a couple of members.
Yeah.
That's what I do.
So I don't know if there's a lot of other discussion, but we did want, I did want to be able to speak officially on behalf of Cherry Hills Village and know that I was actually accurately communicating your thoughts on the subject. Yes.
I'm, I'm just curious, do we know if some of the other bigger cities who might be generally in favor of these ADUs not being restricted, are they okay with the language as proposed? Or do we know, are they objecting to the vague, broad, how are we going to support them? What about parking? What about the whole things that we're worried about here? Are any of them expressing worry there?
I guess what I would say is that I have not heard any community express support for this bill, but I also haven't heard from, I guess what I would say is I don't know where Denver stands.
Okay.
They had, I know on the, the previous, the previous mayor was a very firm supporter of local control. And there's really two, in my mind, there's two questions at play here, and Earl always makes this point. One is whether ADUs are a good fit for Cherry Hills Village or not, and that's certainly a policy question, discussion that we could have, we could have with our citizens if they were interested. Nobody's ever brought it up, but, so that's question number one, whether ADUs are a good fit or not. And the second question is who should decide whether ADUs are a good question. So I don't know where Denver stands on this particular issue, but even communities that believe ADUs are a good fit for their community have generally been in opposition to these measures that preempt local control. And that is why, I guess it's, we'll see as things progress whether communities take official positions or not, but I don't know of any community that's taken an official position of supporting this bill.
And the one we're, we're looking at is the one that's now on the dais, not the one from the packet.
Yes, this is, um, yes. A couple of word changes.
I have a question that I'm trying to understand a little bit more about the bill, and that is that if an ADU is allowed, is it only allowed to be, in essence, as a rental property, or is it considered to be a, an allowable subdivision, in essence, of a property so that our single-family zoning is violated by an ADU? Or is this something that could only become a rental property? That's question number one. And then question two is, as Paul already said, we allow ADUs with a review process. And so we already allow an increased number of units in our community, and I guess my question is, is this forced ADU going to really increase the number of ADU units in our community? I don't see that it automatically does, so.
Well, those are, I mean, that's the $50 million question. I think probably everybody up here would say we could have, there are many properties in Cherry Hills Village that are zoned to allow ADUs that don't currently have them. So they could, they don't, presumably because they don't want them. I mean, it's possible that it's because they can't afford them, but that's unlikely. And then to your first question, no. I think the bill is a little bit schizophrenic on the topic. On the one hand, all of the legislative declarations at the beginning that explain why this is such a great idea talk about allowing seniors to stay in their homes by letting them generate some income from a rental unit, or as we, you know, experience multi-generational families living together, this is a way for multi-generational families to be able to stay together and stay in their house, et cetera, et cetera. And then there's no owner occupancy requirements, and there was some interesting research that Greenwood Village put together that, according to an article by the Pew Charitable Trust, 25% of all single-family homes sold last year were bought by institutional investors.
Right.
25% nationwide of all homes, and in Arizona, it was even higher. It's like 30-something percent of all homes. So on the one hand, it talks about how we're trying to let people stay in their homes and, and then it talks about, you know, letting people make money. And the people who are going to make money are the investors.
Well, and the other comment that I add on top of that is that a lot of the preamble talks about the high price of housing here and that, I know on the condominium side, there is a push to try and say, okay, our young people are not able to afford houses, so we need a lower-priced option for them. I don't know if this is for grannies at the other end of the scale or whether or not this is for young people who want to purchase a, or be able to purchase a less expensive property, and hence that goes to my question of, is it a subdivision?
No.
Because there's no way that these people are ever going to be building up any of the equity.
Yeah.
Or any of the advantages of being able to own something and then keep using that equity.
Well, that's the other, yeah.
So it defeats the very purpose of what it is that we're trying to do.
It does not include lot-split provisions, thankfully. That was kind of originally part of it, and California, when they passed similar legislation, did include lot-split provisions. And that's another part of the schizophrenia of the bill is that, you know, we're trying to provide affordable housing and affordable homeownership, but these are only best-case scenario going to be rental units, and there's no requirement, again, that they be offered at any sort of, with any sort of affordable restrictions tied to them. And so, you know, you build an AD, and, and there's a discussion on Nextdoor, someone pointed out, you know, you talk about trying to help people who can't afford housing, but you build an ADU, you're going to rent it out at market rate. How does that help? It helps you make money, which is part of what you talk about in the legislative declarations, but it doesn't help people who can't afford housing. Or if you help people who can't afford housing, then you're not making money so that you can stay in your house. Like, which is it?
Well, my, my opinion was they started with the solution.
Yes.
And then they went ahead and wrote the, wrote the preamble saying, look at all the wonderful problems that could be solved with ADUs. And I think they would have been better served by starting with the real problem that they're trying to solve and see if this did the job.
Agreed.
And with that said, I'd like to put a little local spin and add one more whereas. It says something to the effect of, whereas Cherry Hills Village code already permits ADU subject to reasonable design review protocols, and is an, and this legislation is an unnecessary infringement to Cherry Hills Village residents and our local code as a way to bring it home specifically to us. And then I'd like to consider whether or not we want to add to Section Two of the Be It Resolved where you would just add to, and no vote is unprecedented and irresponsible exemption that is unneeded and unwelcome, excuse me, unneeded, unwelcome, and without consideration to existing land, local ordinances that already allow ADUs.
How do people feel?
I think a very, very good addition to this, and I think it does bring it back to Cherry Hills Village. When talking about affordability, any ADU here is not going to contribute to affordable housing. So I think that, that is a good addition and tying in locally.
I agree.
Okay. So I guess what I would like to do, just to keep things procedurally correct, I would entertain a motion to approve this, and then, Rob, I'd like for you to make an amendment
whereas provision that reads, whereas Cherry Hills Village code already permits accessory dwelling units, comma, subject to reasonable design review protocols, and is, and the proposed legislation is an unnecessary infringement to Cherry Hills Village residents and our local code, semicolon. And I would like to add to the end of Section 2, the amendment after the word preemption, add the following words, that is, unneeded, comma, unwelcome, comma, and without consideration to existing local ordinances that already permit accessory dwelling units, period.
Second.
Okay, that amendment has been moved and seconded. The action is on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Now, we will move to a vote on the resolution as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That also passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We will communicate that to the Colorado Municipally. Actually, Clerk, would you be willing to send an email tomorrow to the CML that we approved that resolution? Thank you. I will now adjourn the city, not, I will recess, sorry, the city council meeting and call to order the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village, Charlestown Park, Third Filing General Improvement District Board at 7:01 PM. Roll call of members.
Board Member Eber.
Here.
Board Member Holland.
Here.
Board Member Wheel.
Happy to be here.
Chair Brown.
Here.
Board Member Sheldon.
Here.
Board Member Blum.
Here.
Board Member McGuire is absent.
There is one item on our consent agenda.
Mayor, I wouldn't hear for the January meeting, and I should have abstained, or abstained from the minutes from the initial meeting itself from January 16th, but being that I wasn't here on the 16th, I don't think I should be voting on either of the two GID meetings.
Considering, okay, considering there's only one item on the consent agenda, then just abstain from that.
I will abstain from that.
So, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Yes, I will abstain.
That passes. I will now adjourn the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village, Charlestown Park, Third Filing General Improvement District Board at 7:02 PM, and call to order the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village, Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District Board at 7:02 PM. There is one order of business.
We need roll call again.
Oh, sorry.
For the new board, the different board.
Roll call.
Do we need to go back and do the other one?
You did.
No, okay.
You did it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call, yes, thank you.
Board Member Eber.
Here.
Board Member Holland.
Here.
Board Member Wheel.
Happy to be here.
Chair Brown.
Here.
Board Member Sheldon.
Still here.
Board Member Blum.
Here.
Board Member McGuire is absent.
Sorry, I was thinking we needed to do a roll call vote, not just a roll call. Okay, now, we're on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Yes, I'll abstain.
I now adjourn the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village, Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District Board at 7:03 PM, and reconvene the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village City Council for reports. Yes.
Question. It feels like we could be in a du-.
I know. I was going to ask, how long do we have to keep approving these minutes?
Yeah. Every time we have a meeting, we have to take minutes, and then we have a subsequent meeting to approve the minutes, and, you know, it seems like we had these less frequently, and I, you know, I don't know that we're accomplishing a lot, you know, by doing this, but what's, what's-
Sure, so we, for the GIDs, we have items of business at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year. So, the last set of minutes will just be forwarded to the end of the year.
Okay.
But I like to do the minutes that are approved, the last item of business, which was the resolutions for the beginning of the year, more towards that, because it just happened. But if you'd like, I can postpone going forward, postpone those minutes until we start the budget towards the end of the year.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I hear, I appreciate what you're saying, and that makes perfect sense. So, if we're now, have approved all those minutes from the actual, okay, so if we can just carry over now, movement, yeah. So, we won't have any more of these meetings until we get to the budget process. Okay. Good question.
You had to do the first two because of the first and second reading.
Yes.
And then this one was just doing the minutes of that past one.
Yeah. But last meeting was just approval of the minutes of the meeting before, too.
It was the resolutions for the beginning of the year, the public notice posting-
Yeah, okay, because it was the consent agenda.
...the calendar. It was all in consent, though.
Yeah, okay. So, moving on to reports. For the mayor's report, obviously, the legislature is back in session, and that's keeping me very busy. We just discussed one of the bills. There are others on the horizon. I hope that you're all receiving those updates. There is a bill that would prohibit us from allowing any parking requirements at all for anything, residents, schools, churches, commercial, anything statewide. No parking requirements, period. Look for that. Transit-oriented communities bill, look for that. There've been emails with, you know, more recent drafts. The occupancy limits bill is, has been introduced as on the floor that would prevent us from establishing occupancy limits on number of people, unrelated people who can live in a building. I do believe that there have been some changes for, to allow for safety and, you know, building codes, et cetera. So, it sounds like there is, you can place some limit on it. I think I personally still have issues with the preemption angle, but, so, you know, please just keep your eyes and ears peeled for information as it comes forward, and we'll just do the best we can.
And to that end, I think, and I'm sure they are, I'm sure Doug's not here right, I mean, there also seems to be a lot of stuff going on with sales tax and SUTs and things of that nature, and I'm presuming that we're looking at that really, really closely to see if there's anything that we might not like.
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Yeah, there's, I think there's one bill in particular that really doesn't impact us. It's, there's evidently one community that hasn't complied, hasn't joined SUTs.
Oh, really? Just one?
There's one. And there's a bill to force them to join, and CML is opposing it because when SUTs was created, the entire premise was that it was opt-in. And so, I kind of get the frustration that there's only one that's not, and they would really like for them to be a member, but I don't know that I agree with forcing that. So, there is a lot going on. The, I don't know, CML's legislative conference is next week. I know I'm going, I think Randy, you're going, and Rob's also going. I was invited to be part of the panel discussion at that event for grassroots organizing. I think they thought we did a pretty good job last year for Senate Bill 213, so, you know, before accepting, I was very careful to say that it's a lot easier to organize the grass when there's, when it's a much smaller patch of grass, you know? But, that being said, you know, they felt that there are a lot of small communities that are part of CML, and that experiences.
I'm happy to do it as long as it wasn't in the election.
I doubt we have to worry about that. So, I will be doing that. And then, on the legislative front, our senator actually, I would just like to extend him some public congratulations. His family welcomed their first son to the world last week. So, he, I guess I would, these issues are very important. I would just ask that we be respectful and allow him some time to enjoy that moment before we, before we hammer him. Sorry, Jeff.
Well, and offer our congratulations as well.
Yes, so, congratulations to Senator Bridges. And other than that, I will move on. We'll start with Counselor Blum.
No report.
Just two quick things. First, to our staff, congratulations on your new extended dais there. It looks really good.
Nice to see you.
I'm thrilled to be able to see everybody on the ends now. Second, thank you to our mayor and other council members and our own staff as well on all the communication that you've been providing to us council members as well as the community about these legislative proposals that are out there. I know that I've been hearing recently from some of my neighbors about some of these prospective things that are out there on the horizon, and they're not getting the information directly from me, so they're getting it in other ways, and I think some of it's coming from our HOA, which is being fed information from mayor, I presume to all HOAs that are registered in the city. But anyway, thanks to everybody who's working on that front. I appreciate it. That's all.
I will clarify that I am communicating with the people with, for whom I have email addresses, so if there's anyone watching or anyone looking at this, and you're not receiving the information and you'd like to, I would encourage you to go to the city's website and sign up for the city's email list as a good way to communicate. The communication I have been doing thus far is from me personally, not using city resources, but, all right. May I approach him?
I can confirm that Mrs. Holland is getting your emails, but Mr. Holland is not, for whatever reason.
I don't know what that says about you, Earl.
No report.
It is a personal list, I said.
Exactly. No report.
Counselor Holland.
No report, other than just to say thank you again to Emily and Jay and Don on a great, and Mike Fig, who's not here, on a great report for Colorado Open Lands. It really was terrific, so, thank you.
Counselor Eber.
Quick thank you to all of the city staff. You guys make us all look good up here and do a great job for all the residents of the city, so thank you very much. A particular shout-out to the fact that we just had a big, wet, heavy snowstorm, and everything looked really good. Wanted to specifically thank Public Works for getting out there and doing a great job. We were asked specifically by some of our friends who live in unincorporated Arapahoe County, frankly, to come over and help them shovel because the city wasn't doing their, or the county wasn't doing their job to help them out over there. So, we don't have those problems here. Special thanks. Also, I just wanted to follow up with, at our last meeting, we had a number of people from the Buell neighborhood come and talk to us about an issue that was going on over in their neighborhood. I just wanted to report for our record that that issue appears to have gone away for right now. The issue that they had come before us about was a fence and dog park, I guess I would call it, that had been installed within their neighborhood. It is my understanding that the HOA voted last week to take that down in its entirety, and by now, I believe the fence has been done, but I just wanted to acknowledge that when people come before us and give us ideas about what's going on within our community, I think that we're able to understand better what goes on. It gives people a feeling that they are heard. It gives people an ability to get involved in things that affect their own neighborhoods and see some results that come out of that. I think that, from what I have heard through the grapevine, is that it actually has led to a great deal of citizen involvement, which is something that I think all of us want to have and encourage for our community. I don't think that the resolution of that issue has eliminated the need for some of us on council to think about some of the issues that were originally arose as a result of that, but for now, there's no fire behind those issues.
Thank you for bringing that up, Counselor Eber. I did want to, if the, if we get kind of a general sense of thumbs up, the time to, the best time to address things like dog parks, et cetera, are not when there is one specific example, kind of stirring things up and cloudy in the, you know, muddying the waters. So, if people do feel like maybe dog parks and those types of things, private dog parks are things we might want to talk about and address in our code, I think now that that issue has been resolved, that they have resolved that amongst themselves, this might be a good time for us to have that discussion from a purely policy standpoint and not with any specific issue in mind. And so, do people feel like we need to address dog parks somehow in our code?
Yeah, I do, and I guess I overstepped, because I've already told Paul, I said I'd like to see staff look into that, so I guess I probably should have talked about it with council first, but exactly that, so I agree with everything you just said.
Okay, so assuming that we're all on board with that, then go ahead and listen to Earl then.
So noted.
All right. City manager and staff.
Thank you. Good evening. Just two quick comments. One is that we will be having a retreat on March 5th. As you all know, it'll be all day, and then we have a council meeting that night, so you'll be nice and weary by the time council rolls around. Second, to address kind of the information being sent out about the state legislative actions. Last year, Laura did a terrific job of putting our website together, getting information out to the public, and we are reiterating that, putting the 2024 state legislative, all the issues related to that on our city website, so if you click on it, you'll see that we're keeping that up to date.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Who, nothing from city attorney, city clerk, anything? Director Workman?
No update this week, other than the legislature is rocking and rolling, so it's coming fast and coming furious, but we're doing our best to stay on top of it and make sure we try and keep you all as informed as we can, so if there's things that we can do to help improve that, please let us know.
I really appreciate how quickly you're turning those things around with your comments and observations, because it is fast. Chief.
Good evening. Not much of a report, just want to tee up our upcoming, very first, Citizens Police Academy, which will be kicking off in the middle of April. That's a 10-week program, one night a week, open to all residents of the city who wish to participate. It's a free program. It's just another opportunity for us to engage with this community and demonstrate what it's like to be a police officer in general, but also, and more specifically, what it's like to serve this community in particular. So, there will be some information coming out on our end. From an advertisement perspective, it will be in March's Crier, working on that article now, and more to come, but I just wanted to tee that up as it gets closer to that kickoff date.
Thank you.
Excuse me, real quick on that topic, is there a, is there a desired or minimum age requirement?
This particular program is 18. It's an adult program. There is a teen version that we're working on the curriculum for now that will be done some week in the summer, but for this particular program, it's 18.
And do you have an idea about-
From a liability perspective.
Expected turnout?
I don't. I've run this for about 15 years in other places that I've worked, and I cap it at 30. I don't expect to get 30 at a particular time. I'd be happy with 12, 15, 20 would be amazing, but we'll let the interest dictate that.
Thanks.
I have no report. Mr. Baldi?
I have no report.
And there's nobody over there now, right?
No.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned at 7:18 PM.